A lot of things are done.
Nope, you don't. We're just sidebar conversation. You got it. I'm cool with that. We're hitting all bases, covering a number of topics. No, don't, don't. Maybe I should start talking my oath right now. Dear Derek.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, October 7th, City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Beany?
Here.
Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Chaff?
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of American and to the people in our public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address the City Council at this time with items that are not on the agenda this evening? See none. Moving on to the consent agenda, is any member of the council wanting to pull any items for separate consideration? See none, I'm looking for a motion for approval from 5A through 5E. Alderman Mahavik?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion? See none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Beany?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. First individual action item is 6A, is a motion to approve or deny a Class B liquor license to Don's Subs at 323 Front Street McHenry, and if approved, the adoption of an ordinance increasing the number of Class B liquor licenses to seventeen, from seventeen to eighteen.
Yeah, that's me. Thank you, mayor. This is actually a single agenda supplement for the next two items, the first having to do with Class, the issuance of a Class B liquor license, and the second with the consideration of a video gaming license for the same business. And the second one's obviously dependent on the issuance of the first, and is a separate vote, separate consideration by council. Council's being asked to consider the issuance of a Class B, which, as a reminder, is a table service only liquor license to Don's, Don's Subs LLC, doing businesses Don's Subs, which is down at the Fountain Shops, 323 Front Street, here in McHenry. And obviously, the business is also seeking approval under the separate item for video gaming license. An application was submitted on behalf of the business by Kerry Kern, who was, staff was able to confirm is a hundred percent investor in this business, in terms of the liquor license application, and also through the state. We did meet, the mayor and I met with Ron Foles last week, who was representing the business, just to answer questions and be a part of the meeting, but it's our understanding that there's no, that there's no financial investment. Is that true, Ron, of the business? You're part of the business? Because a couple of council members asked that question of me today, so we confirmed that and wanted to report out on that as part of this, this presentation. The background check was successfully passed by Kerry Kern, and it's now before council for consideration. And again, just as a reminder, council can consider this item and choose to approve or deny this liquor license, and then move on to the video gaming as a separate consideration for approval or denial. Obviously, it would only be considered if the liquor license was approved, but that's, that does not mean that a video gaming license is an automatic approval by the city council, and the business has been notified of this change and how the council looks at liquor licensing and video gaming is aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I'm going to, gonna have discussion by council first. Any questions, comments? Yeah, the applicants are here. Are the applicant? Alderman Santee?
Yeah, if I could ask Mr. Kern a few questions, if you can step up to the podium, please. First question, I just, it's Don's Sub Reach Up, so the focus here, or the number one business in this location would be?
Subs.
The subs and the sandwiches and everything?
The food.
Yeah, okay. And so secondary is, you're looking for a liquor license, and also if that were to be approved, you would look at the potential of actually getting approved on the gaming license also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If in fact, you came aboard with possibly not receiving either one of those licenses, would you open your business?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have established times that you're going to be open?
Not at this time, no. By the end of the month.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are you mean hours of business?
Yeah, this is ours.
From ten, yeah, from ten to nine. Ten to nine.
And you will, I looked at the drawing, I could, it's a little bit sketchy, but I can notice that there is space for actual dining areas, am I correct?
Yes, right up front.
Okay. How many square feet is the total?
I think fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred in the whole, the whole facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Twelve eighty-five.
Twelve eighty-five. I'm sorry.
I have no further questions at this time. Any other questions for the applicant? Alderman Beany?
How many, you're gonna have, I see on the plan, just the seating you have, like, it looks like window seating or a bar, there's gonna be tables as well, do you have an idea how many seats you're gonna have in there?
Till we get everything arranged, it's gonna be tough, but we do have tables, we have like high tops, and then we're gonna run out, a counter to eat at too, along the wall. So, I would say about twenty people for seating, maybe a little more.
Including the bar? Take that, that's like, well, then?
Yes, yes. Limited space.
Alderman Glad?
Mr. Kern, what is your experience in the restaurant business?
We actually, I lived in Florida for ten years, and we had a bar down there, so it was a restaurant, it was a family pub and rub, we called it. It was, we made food, we had a whole full kitchen and everything. Our capacity was about a hundred, hundred seats. It was a sports bar.
And this was where?
It was in Florida.
Oh, in Florida?
Yeah, it was called Time Out.
So you have no experience running an establishment here in Illinois, just up in Florida, correct?
Uh, no, sir, not a restaurant. My dad owned Marathon on the Hill by West Campus, so.
Okay, that's all I've got, right?
Alderman Schaefer?
I just had a couple of questions on the liquor license. I don't know which department this goes to, but one kind of pertains to what Alderman Santee was asking. Under the principal type of business, it was left blank. On page one.
Right in the middle.
Yep. Page fifty-two on the, on our.
Yeah, so the options are bar, restaurant, retail store, hotel, hotel, restaurant, gas station, gaming parlor, et cetera.
Was it left blank for a reason?
Is that, no, I, I don't know.
Here, here, take a look at it. It's right in the middle of the page, your principal type.
Right here?
Yeah.
Restaurant.
Moment's choice.
Restaurant.
The restaurant.
Fast food restaurant.
And hold on to that, I'm.
Okay.
The page three of seven, the first question, kind of an important one, was left blank too. Regarding a liquor license and sales of liquor.
Could Ron come up?
Yeah.
What do you think? Ross Foles? What was the question again, I'm sorry?
The, that question, section ten, question there, will you and all your employees refuse to serve alcohol, refer, refuse to serve and sell alcohol, liquor to an intoxicated person or to a minor, it was left blank.
Absolutely.
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 Definitely will not sell to a liquor.
It's just two important things that were left blank on the application, so that's why I'm asking.
No, correct.
They were both left blank, so it'd be important to have, obviously. Uh, that's all I got for right now.
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, since both of you have been up there, a little bit of background on Don's Sub, I, you know, reading that, I see you guys were in business in the seventies and eighties. So it was a family-owned business, Ron, I remember you were a young man.
That's correct.
Working for your parents over there?
Yeah, they had it for twenty-eight years.
Okay, and, but at one point, you guys did move from one side of Green Street to the other?
We went from sixteen-seating location to, we bought a building called San Regis.
Yeah.
In the San one hundred and fifteen, maybe, something like that. Explain the manual.
How long did you occupy that location that was?
Twelve.
San Regis? Twelve years out of the twenty-eight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, actually, for, for, maybe for Doug or Derek. In that area, the fountains in that strip mall, are there, am I correct, there's already two restaurants that have gaming in there currently?
Addison's, Addison's and.
And, and.
Crab, crab, well, crab, well, crab, not the, and the north end, yeah. The other thing I wanted to mention that I didn't, forgot as part of the earlier presentation was, we also went over the, the video gaming development agreement also, that, that we've been meeting with all the Class A, Class B liquor license holders regarding signage and partitioning and all that, so the applicant is also aware of those, of those limitations, guidelines also as part of the, once we get to that point, if, if we get to that point for council consideration.
Alderman Schaefer?
Just, the other question too is, do you, you really, I guess, feel you need gaming as a component of this to, to make it go?
No. No.
The reason why then is just, you want, if you can have it?
It's a benefit, that's what it is, it's, you know, it seems like everybody has it, it seems like it's something that just made an accident to, to our restaurant.
And like, I mean, five, all five, you want the max?
Yeah, we're just, four or five.
That's all I got.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, you may have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? No? All right, going back to council, I'm looking for a motion for 6A as presented. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Is it to approve or deny?
That's true, yeah, I'm sorry. To approve, do we have to do both together?
No.
That would be, mine is to approve the liquor license.
Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? Alderman Glad?
My feeling is, is that, are we gonna wind up with snack rack or vendor machines in a place, and then somebody gonna want a liquor license, or gonna wind up video gaming or whatever? You know, why is it every food place has to have liquor? I, I, you know, I can see, you go to a restaurant, you want a nice dinner, and you want either wine or even a, a highball, but for a sub sandwich, I, I think sooner or later, you've gotta say no to some of these, and I just can't support it.
Any other questions? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderwoman Beany?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6B, motion to approve or deny a video gaming license to Don's Subs at 323 Front Street McHenry, contingent on the action taken on the agenda item A. Derek, obviously, already presented this, is there a discussion by council?
There's one other element that you wanted to discuss or repeat?
I just, I just mentioned it before, that they're aware of the development agreement that would be a requirement if council were to approve this, it would also be contingent upon the execution of that agreement, which discusses signage, exterior signage and signage in the front windows, and also requirement for partitioning. They're aware of that, those requirements.
Alderman Schaefer?
I just wanna mention too, for the rest of the council and some of our new members, we, we had a similar, I wouldn't call it identical case like this, though, where a establishment came in and they were going into an existing location, and had a huge variety of food menu that was mentioned, and as of, in alcohol and gaming, and as of today, there's zero food there, so we just gotta be aware of that sometimes, but that did happen at the location where Stucks is at right now. Just a little history. If I'm wrong, chief, let me know.
No food?
No.
Okay.
All right. Discussion, Alderman Santee?
Yeah, Mr. Kern, I, I mean, if you can confirm with me, you just spoke that you'd be willing to start this business, you know, potentially without the liquor or without the gaming. Liquor's just been approved, and now gaming's in front of us. You're staying behind that statement, you know, that you're willing to go whether we have, whether you have gaming or not day one, prior to. And I, and I guess because of, well, I kind of follow what Alderman Schaefer mentioned, but also just a little bit of history is that, but I think most of it was with this council, is that I have asked on two separate occasions for people that came up with the gaming question to us, to ask if they'd be willing to possibly forego their first year or two without it, come back to us, and, you know, potentially be comfortable with the recommendation at that time. And, you know, I, I, one, I do recall, one did say yes at, you know, at that meeting, and I, and I think that's up there for possible discussion with the other council members. If you see that, if, or if we see that as a council, as a way of putting forth this business, and potentially saying, come back in one year, and we'll discuss the gaming at that time, and put it out in front of the other six members to, if they want to express their thoughts on it, that's great, and I'm willing to listen to either way and reasoning behind it.
Discussion? Alderman Schaefer?
Yeah, I mean, our, our, the issue is legally, we can't, if you get a liquor license, you can go right away. I mean, we've talked in the past as a council about having an annual wait, we've never instituted that or anything. I do, I know other communities do similar things, and, you know, it's a big investment either way. I, I, I personally, and people I talk to again, say we have plenty of gaming in town, and, and they're very happy. I mean, I grew up myself with Don's Subs too, so I mean, they're happy that they heard this was coming back. The only negative was, why do they have to have gaming? And it's not that I don't think it would work there, it's just, it's just that a lot of people find it odd, so I, I don't know if anybody else has anything about that, that year wait, I don't know if we can do that separately to a, to a license holder, since we've not done that anywhere else in the past, I doubt it, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah. So I, I think, you know, the direction from McCardo, I think we just, you would have the opportunity to deny it, in one year, they can come back and.
Do they get a year after we deny it, or do they have to wait a year?
No, they don't have to, our rules didn't, we didn't select that type of process.
Okay.
Which you could have done, and there are, I think Crystal Lake does that, but not the year, but they have some timeframe. But what all the mayor was saying is, if it were to get denied today, they could come back later and ask us for it.
I, I just don't want to see him not, not, not do the business without the gaming, is my condition.
And you're, you're, the construction's already moving. You're already, you already need deep at this point.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the gaming area is gonna be secluded too, so you're not gonna see any machines. Yeah, and then one of the.
What's your name? Can you step to the podium? Can you step to the podium, state your name for public record, please?
Hi, my name's Annette Wenzenski, I work for Excel Entertainment, one of the video gaming companies. So I just wanted to add that, I understand that you're concerned with video gaming, but they're doing it just to stay competitive, it's not gonna be their primary business, it's gonna be their secondary business. The area's gonna be nice secluded, we're gonna have walls set up, so you can't see the video gaming. I just wanted to point that out.
And that, that, that's the concern, not only is it law, but that that's the concern of moving right into the cafe style, which we have several multiples of, and that's not what this council has been looking for, was exactly what you just described.
No, well, the gaming area is gonna be maybe like twenty-five percent of the whole, twenty-five percent of the establishment. The rest of it is, I have a little, small little layout design, if you'd like to see what it's gonna look like.
I think just, I think just to clarify, and this was passed on to Mr. Foles the other day too, and that's why we have it set up the way we have it, is, you know, this council has sent a strong message that, that, that it does not favorably on the new video gaming establish, establishments that include video gaming, that they wanna be very specific about the type of businesses that are gonna have video gaming in it, so that, I think they understand the layout and the separation, in fact, that's why we have a separate development agreement now that says that it has to be partitioned, so that would be required whether or not you were planning on doing it anyway. It's just the feeling of the city council at this time, with the number of, bless you, with the number of video gaming establishments and terminals that we have in the community, that that's the, that's the general feeling right now in McHenry.
I, I understand.
He may ask you. Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? No? Anyone from the public that would make a public comment regarding this item? See none at this time for a motion to approve or deny for 6B? As presented? Alderman Schaefer?
I'll, I'll make the motion to deny the gaming.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Glad?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
No.
Alderman, Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Beany?
Yes.
Thank you, council. So that is denied for the gaming portion. Good luck. Congratulations, and we look forward to visiting your establishment.
I look forward to seeing you, thanks so much.
Thanks. Your morning?
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is 6C, motion to approve public use of cannabis, 6A, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-three, taxation of the City of McHenry Municipal Code, municipal cannabis retailers' occupation tax. We're gonna have discussion on that item. Actually, Doug, you wanna go ahead and present it?
Thank you, mayor. Should I present all three items?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. Attach our amendments to the municipal, municipal code pertaining to the public use of cannabis, municipal cannabis retailers' occupation tax, and tax amendments to the zoning ordinance to Article Three, General District Regulations, Article Five, Commercial Districts, Article Six, Office, Industrial, Business Park, Agricultural and Mining Overlay in Healthcare Districts, Article Seven, Off-Street Parking and Loading, and Article Nineteen, Definitions Pertaining to Adult-Use Cannabis. Including with these ordinances is a three percent tax on the gross receipts for cannabis, as well as a zoning ordinance, as well as an ordinance, amending the Drug Paraphernalia Ordinance in the Municipal Code regarding cannabis, as well as a zoning ordinance amendment, which requires a conditional use permit for adult-use cannabis, limits the adult-use cannabis dispensaries to two within the city limits, prohibits onsite consumption of dispensaries, there institutes a thousand-foot separation of dispensaries from schools, permits the adult-use cannabis in C5, I1, and BP zoning districts, and prohibits the dispensaries and craft growers which can be co-located together north of McCollum Lake Road. Those are just some of the things that are included in the zoning ordinance aspect of the amendments for adult-use cannabis. I'll be happy to answer questions you may have on this.
Thank you, Doug. So we'll go ahead and have discussion on items C, A, B, and C. It should be one, two, three, but we'll just go say C, A, B, C, A, C, B, C, C. All right, so we'll have discussion on all those. Alderman Schaefer?
Doug, can you clarify a couple of things for me? The, the three zoning classifications, C5, I1, and BP?
Yes, there's, so there's, if you go to the ordinance, there's, there's several different adult-use cannabis businesses. So in C5, adult-use cannabis dispensing organizations are allowed in C5, so those are dispensaries, as well as craft growers. And those are allowed, because there's a co-location provision in the ordinance allows these two businesses to be co-located into one business, so in order for them to be co-located, they have to be allowed in C5. So those are the only two businesses allowed in C5 as a conditional use. The rest of the businesses, the infuser organization, or the infuser, the adult-use cannabis processing organization or processor, and the transporter, those are all I1 or BP. And I should say, the craft grower and dispenser are also allowed in I1 and BP as well.
Okay. That's conditional use. That, thank you, that explains that. The, and then just for the schools definition, I don't know if it's you or chief, but does that include daycare centers, things like that? What, what, how do you define a school?
So it does not, it does not include daycare centers. A school would be a primary or secondary school, basically, middle school, high school, secondary, primary school.
So if you're a church holding a daycare, that wouldn't qualify?
Correct.
Okay. And then, to, to clarify, to the, just today, I saw, not here in McHenry, gas stations that now have the, the oil, the CBD oil, is that, this is a general question, is that allowed anywhere in McHenry right now?
Allowed everywhere, as long as you're pimp, and not THC is below a certain percentage content, it's legal. It has nothing to do with this particular ordinance.
Gotcha. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Santee?
Just make sure I'm, I'm understanding, under, under the C5, all different aspects of this would be available, and those, and that zoning, or is it, is that just for, just two of them?
Just the two.
Just the two, which, and those two are?
Craft and dispenser.
Okay. When I was looking at the planning and zoning meeting minutes and reviewing those, when it came to public comment on this item, were there any public comments?
No, I don't believe there were any public there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry.
I don't recall, in the minutes, it said nothing.
I'm sorry, the, the chief was there, the chief, chief clerk was there to testify on, which his comments are included in the ordinance, as far as, I should clarify that.
Yeah, I, I just, when I, when I reread what Chairman Strack, you know, meant, offered, you know, comments from the public, there was, there was nothing after that, that question, so there was no public input at the point, that's. So there was no public input at, that's my point, there was no public input.
Right.
That's all I have.
Alderman Miller?
So that was my other question as well. There were no other attendees at this meeting?
No.
And this was a regular scheduled meeting?
It was a special meeting, but it was published.
So it was a special meeting, but it was published, and there were no members of the public other than Chief Burke at the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Just, yes.
And, oops, sorry.
No, go ahead.
In regards to that too, and the, just, so I'm clear, the only, uh, planning and zoning questions are what, the, the three that were there, that was it? There was nothing else asked other than that for the minutes? Because I know not everything sometimes gets published, but I just wanna make sure that those are the, actually two.
You, you mean in general from planning and zoning, or from...
Yeah, it seems like there was very little discussion. I just wanna try to get that.
There was, I'd probably say very little discussion. Um, I, I think that that's a fair statement.
I mean, you pretty much covered everything, Doug. You just did a good job.
You did. You did. The, um, okay. The, the other thing too is Ken, uh, something be added for, uh, daycare and that type of preschool-aged children? Or is that not something we think is, is an issue? Chief or Doug?
You want me to answer? Go ahead, Chief.
Go ahead. The constant get direction that they wanted there to be some kind of a market for up to two dispensaries to go into town. If you add daycare facilities, you will eliminate all of those districts because of that exemption. There's daycare, licensed daycare facilities that would fall within the thousand-foot mark that would take out all your industrial parks and a good chunk of all your C-five and along with your light industrial. That would be the answer to it. It would, it would actually restrict it so much, there'd be like two buildings left, that you could even potentially market for the location.
The, the first thing we did was we drew circles on a map for the schools, and, and they, and said that, you know, dispensaries could not go within these areas. And, um, so we knew what we were dealing with. And like the chief said, th- this would include home daycares, this would include, you know, commercial daycares. It would be a considerable area of, uh, area that would be covered, that would be excluded from putting one of these facilities.
The, the thirteen schools that we have in town, with that thousand-foot rule, completely, significantly restricted all the zoning areas that they're marked off of.
Thousand was our number, right? That's, that's...
Thousand was our number.
Yes, yeah, that's, I mean, you could make it five hundred and include daycare, or you could do something like that. I'm not saying that's what we do, but thousand came from, from you guys.
Make it zero, right.
Okay.
Correct.
Gotcha. Good, thank you.
Alderman Benny?
I have a question for staff because I just don't know this, and I'm more curious. How far do gun shops have to be from schools in City of McHenry?
There's no restriction.
So we can put a gun shop next to a school, and we're designated a thousand feet for cannabis dispensary?
Alderman Santi? Okay. I, I know it's in here, just refresh my memory, the number of licenses that are going to be out there January one or prior to January one that are gonna be able to open is, how many?
Fifty-five additional January one? Yeah, I think like fifty-five. I think it's fifty-five.
Fifty-five for the state. Correct.
Just to begin with, though.
Just to begin with, and then it moves up to seventy-five in the, in the summer or something? Is that, how do I read it?
I think it's a hundred in the second year.
A hundred in the second year?
Additional hundred.
Additional hundred, so...
Then it goes to five hundred the third year.
Okay. And how the licenses are received is actually through the state to that private ownership?
Issued, right.
Issued through the state. So once a private owner, you know, Mr. Smith receives his license down in Springfield, then he heads back to McHenry County or wherever he wants to go, and then he starts discussions with municipalities, correct?
Yeah, he probably will have made representations in his application already going to the state.
Okay, he's...
Where he's interested in going and where they're interested in having.
In multiple municipalities.
In multiple, right.
And, but he's not tied into that?
No.
Okay. All right, so he can pretty much take his license and...
Market it.
Market it, negotiate the best deal he can. Okay. Thank you, that's what I wanted to know. Alderman Glenn?
I just wanna mention the fact that, uh, if you compare this a little to our liquor ordinances and what we did years back, uh, it used to be that you couldn't buy liquor in the, the gas stations, and I was proponent to, to have it there, because my feeling was is, okay, you know, it's a hot summer day, and people are out partying in the patio, and somebody runs out a beer after having six or, six or eight beers, and at least if they're gonna go out, they're not going downtown where it's busy or whatever, they go to their neighborhood gas station, at least there's a lot less risk to the public. Same with this, without restrictions of anything other than schools, I mean, uh, you know, if you're talking churches, if you're talking daycare centers or whatever, there is a potential more for things to happen without those restrictions. And to be honest with you, you know, I take a look and see what the, the possible revenue for the city is, and I take a look at what the chief and his crew are gonna have to go through if it ever comes to McHenry, and I, I just tend to wonder if it's gonna be a trade-off or more of a hassle for the police department or whatever. And, uh, I'll be honest with you, I, I just don't like the idea of having a dispensary here.
Alderman Santi?
I understand your concerns, the, the only thing I think of is that, yeah, there's, it's definitely going to be, uh, a certain, I don't have sale at the workload towards the police department, but there again, uh, come January one, it's here. Whether it's dispensing or not, it's here. I, I, you know, and, and he's gonna have to take care of that, yeah. I, I see your point, but I, but, but I see that, you know, as we're trying to, I guess, you know, there, there is some income that comes into that, so I, I see both sides. Thanks.
Chief, is there, is there obviously a benefit to have it here? It's going through your municipality anyway. What is your take on that?
Uh, you, and I'll give an opinion. Before I do, I just wanted to clarify, there, there's actually up to seventy-five new dispensaries that will affect October fifteenth of this year that they'll, that they will make available. And then there's fifty-five existing medical dispensaries that can also apply to become a public dispensary as well. So just to clarify that. Seventy-five by the summer of... Seventy-five, and then by July first of twenty twenty, up to forty craft grower and infuser licenses will also be issued. But that's coming, that's later. So the, the race is these seventy-five applications statewide that, that everybody's on, on the hook for. So, um, and then to, to answer the issue with complications, that, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, um, but I think what history has shown us in other states that have legalized cannabis is that comes with complications, you know, that have to be mitigated, and, and how significant that is. You know, I, I can't give you a defined number. What I can say is that cannabis is coming to Illinois as a state, and it's becoming legal. Those complications are coming to McHenry, we're gonna have to mitigate in one way or the other. It's just a matter of what volume we're going to experience, and that might be a little difference if we, you know, whether or not we have one in our community or not. But it also is tied to, which is not my side of the bill, the revenue that would help offset some of that as well, too.
Alderman, Alderwoman Benny?
Um, you know, I wanna talk about this thousand-foot from schools thing, because it, so if I understand this correctly, if you have to get a conditional use permit, it's always going to have to be approved in any location, whether that thousand feet from a school were in existence or not. Like, no, they're not gonna go anywhere within the city limits without approval of a conditional use permit, correct?
Right, but remember, a condi, if we insert this conditional use permit, then that's a permit they're entitled to if they meet certain requirements.
So we can't actually, it's not a...
No, you wouldn't be installing a restriction of any squ, uh, distance from a particular use that's not already in your ordinance. That wouldn't be a reasonable condition. A condition would be putting up bushes, a screen, or noise, or something like that, not prohibiting it because you're too close to a school. You know what I mean, at that stage? So if you're gonna do a distance from another type of neighboring use, this is the way to regulate that. And I wanted to follow up on your point before you finish. If anyone's, um, to, to go along with yours and to implement, what I thought, the direction you were possibly going is to change the thousand-foot. You can do that now. Where this thousand is just a recommendation from zoning and staff or whatever to the city council, you can change that. You can go to zero, you can go to two feet, you can go to two thousand feet.
Yeah, I just don't understand why we've got, you know, we don't have those kinds of conditions on things that I actually think are more dangerous in the community, and that we're setting it at a thousand feet for something that those students aren't using, that people aren't, you know, it's not even like a bar where they're drinking there and then pulling out. You know, we're not allowing, um, consumption in those areas, so I think a thousand feet is kind of excessive.
Okay, and so I'm, what I'm saying to you in...
That we could propose lower.
You, you, your motion can be lower. I want you to know that the way to process this is to see what the others, council people think, and if they're going along with you, get the consensus before you make the motion, or whoever's gonna make it, and then make the motion to approve the subject to the edit of a thousand to be X, whatever you think it should be.
I just think there was some compelling arguments. I mean, this is so new, and there's so much for all of us to learn, and it kind of concerns me that nobody was at the planning and zoning meeting to discuss it, because I really thought that that would be the place that we would have more of the people that we had at our last meeting discussing this, kind of diving deeper into why it might be in areas where at first we all thought it should just be an industrial, and they made some pretty good arguments why that may not be the best location. And I think we want, you know, I, I'm actually all for this, it's coming, I'd like to see in our community, you know, I'd rather people be shopping here than driving somewhere else out of our community and leaving money, um, and adjoining communities, and I wanna see it be as successful as possible. And I think that that thousand feet, you know, is, is too much, and I wish that it would have been discussed further on the zoning and probably more discussion and more input.
I think you should also be aware that this is happening around the county. It seems that the city councils and village boards think that the public is going to come out and give them some direction, and they're not getting that direction, which means they're just leaving it to your just...
Yeah, and I wasn't even thinking of the public, I was thinking more, you know, we had some professionals here, people that were applying that, you know, had, had some experience in the industry, and I wish we would have had more of that discussion at planning and zoning, so we got a recommendation that just had a little more depth to it.
Alderman Glenn?
I just wanted to speak in favor of the process, that this is the third time we've spoke to this, and the first was just a lively discussion, which we went back to staff with direction. Um, Chief Burke, your input was amazing. Obviously, Director Martin, you took it to planning and zoning, you guys came back with this proposal. Um, I think this is how government's supposed to work. It, it's a process, and here we sit with a proposal that we all are chewing on going, this works. The public didn't oppose it, they didn't come out in masses and say, oh my God, what are you thinking? So I just wanna thank everyone that touched this piece of work, because this demonstrates that we're doing the right thing, and that really was what I'm sitting here thinking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Glenn?
Yeah. Uh, okay, they had to publish it as a paper, however, were there any articles about the planning and zoning and going to this?
No.
Right, so the public, if they're gonna come out, they're gonna read it in the paper, and that's what starts the discussion and starts people coming out to go to them. They don't look at the, you know, they, they, uh, whatever, uh, column and, uh, for the public notices, and, uh, you know...
This meeting is published, and it was an article in the paper, and I don't think there's anyone here besides people that would...
And that's fine.
Just FYI, I mean, it was published.
But, you know, uh, you know, I'm just saying, you know, I just think to some extent, there needs to be more public input, and I don't know how you get to that position to, to have people come out. Um, you know, there was discussion about the thousand feet, and we're talking thousand feet from school as far as gun control. I think with concealed and carry, I think that changes a little. However, the thousand feet is not a state mandatory, it is a federal mandatory, and I don't know how the, the feds have changed things over the years. And the chief's looking at me very curiously, I, but I can tell you, I researched this year back with Second Amendment, and the ATF actually went into certain states and actually shut down, uh, gun ranges that were within a certain distance of a church or a school. So it, it was out there, and the ATF was involved, which means it was a federal issue. You know, whether or not, uh, locally it gets enforced or not, uh, that's a concern of mine as well. You know, you can put it on the books, there's so many ordinances I see out there that are infractions that nobody does anything about, you know, and I'm not saying be a nitpicky, but minor, I mean, major ones do. You know, people that have parked on grass for fourteen days in a row, and there's ruts and everything else on, on the side of the driveway, I mean, different things like that. I mean, you could just go on and on and on and on. All I'm saying is, is I think we need to think clearly about this. Yes, cannabis is here, however, does it need, necessarily mean we need to bring users of cannabis over and above the, the limits of the City of McHenry to come into the, the city to get, um, get their cannabis here instead of somewhere else? So...
Alderman Glenn?
So I just had a question of Monty. So you would answer the phone all day if people were calling about our agenda? Did anybody call about our agenda? Zero?
No, nobody.
Nobody, okay. Answer the answer, thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
Um, Chief, this is for you too. The, the medical's been around for how long now? Medical, I'm in fourteen?
Yep.
And we, we do have one in Lake County, that's our closest, and we have, we've not had any, or I shouldn't answer that. Have there been any issues related to that?
Nothing, I'm aware.
Within the city limits? Okay.
Nothing, I'm aware.
And those places do, they're the ones right now who are either opting in or opting out. I, I've heard some have already opted out, which is odd, because I think the people that were here last time spoke that those fifty-five are gonna take it automatically, but, um, I just, I just wanted to make that point, because I don't think there's been any issues whatsoever.
No, I would say that they are two different businesses, though.
Okay.
You know, I do think that you have people that have gone through a process, their license, only a specific group of people is going to obtain that cannabis at that location. A public dispensary is a public, it's the entire public.
Right, and then, and, and public here in the City of McHenry have mentioned that that having a public dispensary for them, both on, with medical rights to it, that's gonna help them out, because they don't have to travel as far.
If they have a medical card, right, because it's the sales tax that they're not gonna be hit with.
Oh, yeah.
With a medical card. That's the big difference there.
And is, just to go back to the thousand feet, is a thousand feet for the medical dispensaries right now in the state, do you know?
It's fifteen-hundred feet from dispensary to dispensary, and so, you know, when, when we look at the schools, or we look at this in a couple different ways, is we were trying to come back to council with a formula that came back to with what your wishes were, which is you didn't wanna see more than two dispensaries located. You all said you wanted dispensaries, and then you said you didn't wanna see more than two dispensaries within town. So we worked off of that base formula. So when we added additional layers of restrictions above and beyond the fifteen-hundred feet from each, each other, we looked at safety factors. So the police department, from the law enforcement perspective, we do have a concern about dispensaries being closely located to schools. The use of drugs in our schools and our children, and that the level of influence and how it affects them as an adolescents is a concern that law enforcement has. And so that way, if we can regulate it from a distance of those schools where they're, where they might be more adversely impacted in a negative way by it, um, that's the reason why we added that thousand-foot mark. Plus, it helped fit that puzzle to make sure that we had sufficient locations in town that had viable buildings and locations with proper parking, with proper square footage, uh, to still allow us to be competitive amongst other communities around us.
Excellent. And the, the reason for nothing north of McCollum Lake was just a...
That was a safety risk factor, so we looked at those particular shopping mall complexes have a large amount of civilian foot traffic, including children, families, um, and, and we look at that, we mix it with response time for police, because it is the farther northern district for us. Uh, we had a, a public safety concern that that would not be the best place to have a facility, should there be a public safety-related incident in relation to that location.
Thank you, chief.
Alderman Benny?
Um, I find that interesting, because we have bars everywhere, and, you know, and gun shops everywhere, and that seems to be an influence, you know, on kids too. Um, I, can we, but when we vote on this, do we have to vote on it in one lump sum, or can we vote on the sales tax and maybe kick the distance back? And maybe kick the distance back, I mean, I'm, I really would like to revisit that, but I don't want to make a proposal because I don't know what that would look like on a map and I feel like that's irresponsible to do. And then, you know, then there's the paraphernalia piece, can we vote on those separately or does this all have to be in one package with one?
We could vote on C A separately, C B and C C separately.
Okay.
But if you're gonna table A and then there's really no point voting on the other two because the other two are controversial ones. You know, I mean, if you're gonna vote on all three tonight and you need to break those apart for a reason, that makes sense, but it doesn't really do much good to vote, to pass the tax and the correction of all the other ordinance one. And then table the made zoning ordinance, but I'm not sure what you had in mind when you-
Yeah, well, like I said, I'm not, I really wasn't prepared to, you know, I don't know what that would look like if that was changed, so I don't want to-
I'd rather see it redrafted.
Limiting it or, and I don't think it's right to not have a distance, I also have a distance between the schools, but-
Yeah, you'd rather redraft it right back.
Yeah, I feel like we'd have more control over where it went and actually that was lower, you know, lower distance.
In any event, they can be broken apart.
I also want to keep in mind the reason we did a special meeting was trying to move this along.
Well, I know, yeah.
Just FYI, just so that we could
Be in the game.
Be in the game versus
Yeah.
Yep.
Being too late, so Alderman Shaker?
I, I agree with that too and maybe to help everyone who may have this, that you ever be thinking about it like Alderman Bany is, is the, I feel confident right now based on what Chief has had and Administrator Doug-
Martin, sorry.
That they, they seem to feel confident that with that thousand feet, there's, we do have space and access and all the things you just mentioned, parking and locations that are available to us, so. I'm just using that as staff did their job and told us that it'll work.
Alderman Miller?
Yeah, and Alderman Bany, if I can help you with that too, the C five, the I one and the BP are very specific on the map. So they won't be as intrusive to those school areas because of where they're located. So where you're thinking where the schools are and let's go to five hundred feet, those schools aren't anywhere near those except for Parkland, which is C five along one twenty. Everything else is not anywhere near those zones if I remember my maps correctly.
Okay.
Because C five would really be highway thirty-one and one twenty, then of course the I is the industrial and the V is the business park. So the thousand feet shouldn't be really anywhere near those schools, Doug, back me up if I'm wrong. Am I right?
Well, there is some impact on, on West Route one twenty, a little bit on North thirty-one with Montini. I'll say that South Route thirty-one is pretty clear, the business parks are pretty clear. But there is some, there is some impact on West Route one twenty and a little bit on North Richmond, South McCollum Lake Road.
Now, another relief that would be available procedurally is if we pose a thousand feet, someone, an applicant wants a particular property that's nine hundred feet instead of a thousand, they can answer a variation. They're gonna have to go to zoning anyway for conditional use.
That's right.
That's another option. Won't be on the books perfectly, they could work.
Is that open?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Chief?
Yeah, and I would add, I think there are three schools that are affected by this, but I don't think even five hundred would really change the effect so much, the Hilltop is another one. So we have the Adams Industrial Park there, but even if we restricted it to five hundred feet, we're still gonna be well within that tire park and it's gonna be off limits because of the close location to that school.
So it would have to go to zero.
At the end of the day, you'd have to knock it down probably at least a hundred feet before you start to put part of that park. Because literally the back of the property for Hilltop butts up to that industrial park. So you have Parkland that might be slightly affected, you might have the seventeen hundred block of Richmond Road, which is where Big R is at anyways, in that shopping mall complex. And I don't even know if that's zoned properly.
It's not zoned.
It's not C five, so it's irrelevant. So that's why I think the impact is very little.
Sure.
Right.
And Doug, you've met with a lot of the people that are looking to put applicants in, are any of these properties or any of these areas affected? Whether it's a thousand or a hundred?
I, I haven't talked about specific, a couple have talked about specific properties, not a whole lot. And I don't think these areas would be properties that would be sought after, the ones that are affected. Especially the ones on Route one twenty, I mean, they're very shallow properties, older, former residential properties and I just don't think they're gonna be highly sought after properties.
Any other questions? Alderman Santee? And just to follow up, Attorney McCullough mentioned that we do have the, the option, it's a, they could come to us with a special use, conditional use, correct?
Yeah.
Then that would be the, you know, that would be the final, you know, hurdle that they'd have to, if, for example, if they did want to go into the Adams Industrial Park and he set a tone, you know, they still could submit that to us and we'd have to, just to prove that it's a special use. That's all I have. Alderman Bany?
Okay, if we're talking a thousand feet from schools and a church has Sunday School, that doesn't constitute being a school?
No, not by definition.
They are teaching our youth, what's our definition of school?
It's defined under the School Act, that's what Doug said, it's gonna be your primary and secondary schools, it's first grade through twelfth grade.
Okay.
If we put a restriction on, honestly, we looked at this, we have, we have daycare facilities in all of our industrial parks. We have, you know, and again, we have daycare facilities at the hospital, I mean, they're everywhere and we would have to pull a list from DCFF to find out all the home, licensed home care day facilities too, even if you put a five hundred foot restriction on that, the impact it would have on the availability for these businesses to apply would be significant.
So, what's the restriction for parks? Nothing? They could, they could, they could come in and require or ask for a piece of property that's right next door to a park.
Correct, as long as it was in those zoning districts, but I don't think, I don't think there's any properties that are parks on to our parks that are in those zoning districts.
Ten thousand feet, I think we do on some. But still, you know, again, I just tend to wonder, you know, we keep talking about what locations, where we could be protective and where we can't be protective and we can be protected by just saying, no, we're not gonna have it and that's it. And that would solve a lot of the headaches and the problems as far as anybody looking for where to put it and what the chief has to do as far as to make sure there's security there and so on, so. I, I'm not gonna support it.
Any other questions, comments? Can we go to the public comment? No? Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment? Sir? Cover some of the podium, state your name to the public record, you know, many of us know you.
Good morning, my name's Wayne Crichina. I have nothing to do with this agenda item, but I was looking for dispensaries in some of the counties to far, to the south of McHenry and some of the criteria for that was they were looking for, they said they have to have a facility that has a drive-in facility because they can't, and I just didn't know if the council knew that, it has to be a drive-in facility because deliveries for the product or the income coming in has to be done inside the door. So a lot of the small things you guys were talking about in those areas, none of those properties will really qualify because they don't have, they're not big enough to bring a secure truck into the facility. So I was just throwing that comment out, I didn't know if anyone knew that.
Thank you, Wayne, appreciate it. Anyone else that'd like to make a public comment? See none, looking for a motion?
Other question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I know there's been a lot, you know, everybody talks about the locals, communities, what they've discussed on this. What about if you go a little further south, I mean, if you look at the bigger suburbs like Naperville and and you would think those, those communities would be, considering the size of them, would be numbering a lot more policemen and so on. And I'm not saying the chief needs to go out and find out what the statistics are on that, but all those voted against it from what I've read, I mean, that they don't want it in their community. And I think that's the first time I, I looked at it as, is that what we really want in our community and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Looking for a motion for items seven A, B and C.
Six, six C, A, B.
Six C, A, B, C.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Six C, A, B, C.
I'll make that motion for six C, A, B and C as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Alderman Bany? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six D. Motion to approve the following pertaining to the issuance of certain additional tobacco licenses. Baping, Doug, can you approve this as a title?
Thank you, Mayor. Test, or an ordinance terminating a temporary moratorium on the issuance of certain additional tobacco licenses, an ordinance amending chapter fourteen offenses miscellaneous of the municipal code of the city of McHenry, Illinois, and text amendments to Article Three General District Regulations, Article Five Commercial Districts and Article nineteen definitions of the city of McHenry zoning ordinance regarding vaping establishments. These ordinances will end the moratorium that the council issued on vaping establishments and, or I'm sorry, issuing tobacco licenses. It adds the word smoking herbs to chapter fourteen. There is a ordinance included for the amendment to the zoning ordinance which allows vaping establishments in the C five zoning district only, as well as requires them to get a tobacco license and institutes a thousand foot separation from schools, childcare facilities, other vaping establishments, as well as child recreation facilities. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? See none, is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none, I'm looking for a motion to approve six D, A, B, C and D as presented. Alderman Shaker?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes, thank you, council. At this time, we're gonna go into executive session, I would ask that everyone please exit chambers and we- Yeah, Wayne Crichina, you can stand.
You can always come back.
You can always come back in about ten minutes or so. Alderman Santee for a motion?